The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Devote. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Cox Antwee. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Present.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Present.
Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Cox Antwee. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Ten present, you have corn.
A corn being present, we will dispense with line items three and four. Any introduction of honored guests? Any introduction of honored guests? Alderwoman from the first.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. Today I have a very special honored guest. This is Vincent Michael Quinn, the newest First Ward resident. He is super excited to be participating in his first Board of Aldermen meeting. I'm sure it will be one of many. Wish we could be there person, but he's just a little bit less than a week old and he is, well, just not quite ready for like a crab. But he will be soon. And I'd also like to have as my honored guest, my wonderful mother-in-law Julie Quinn, who's been here with us for the last several days and my kitchen has never been cleaner. My baby's probably the happiest he'll ever been, having so much support here with us. And then my husband Jimmy Quinn is also here with me today. So I just want to say hi to everybody and thanks for having us back and people for covering for me for the last week. I will be taking some more time to, you know, bond and all of that, but some pretty important stuff on the, on the agenda today, so I wanted to be here and Vinnie was pretty, pretty insistent upon it, honestly. So here we are and if he cries, you know, it's probably because someone's talking too long. And I do apologize to the Alderman of the 14th, who I'm sure would have preferred to have introduced Vinnie as his honored guest, but the Godfather, of course, can still have him as well. So thank you all and I can't wait to be back with you. And he is wearing a cap from his Board of Aldermen baby shower. So he's, he's ready to meet all of his BOA family soon. All right. Thanks, everybody.
Congratulations, Alderwoman, and for everyone, all the Alders in the chamber today, just a reminder that when baby Vincent cries, that means it's your time to wrap it up.
I will unmute.
Alderman from the 14th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. Of course, I had to let the mother go first, but I would also love to have as my honored guest baby Vincent Rasheen Quinn as the Board of Aldermen's special guest today, as well as I want to give a shout out to Jimmy, who I know has just been super amazing and as the Godfather of the child, I'm super excited. Can't wait to see the baby this weekend. And we have missed you, Alderwoman, and we look forward to you coming back very soon, but take your time and we will see you soon and we will be seeing the baby down at the floor as we babysit him over the time as you try to hold a fight on the microphone. So thank you, Alderwoman.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Any further introduction of honored guests? Seeing none, Alderman from the 14th, you are recognized on the approval of the minutes from Friday, October 24, 2025.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I move to, I move to approve the minutes from October 24th, 2025.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 11th, that we approve the minutes from Friday. Alderwoman from the 13th.
Yes, Madam Chair, Madam President and Board, I'd like to speak on a minutes given for the Health Committee report on October the 24th, and it was given by Alderman Rashee Aldridge, who does not sit on that committee. And we had board members there that sit on the Health Committee that could have given that report. And so I'd like that to reflect that the wrong person gave the report.
That is noted. Thank you, Alderwoman. Anything on the minutes? Okay. It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 11th, that we approve the minutes from Friday, October 24, 2025. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, C, and D of the agenda and has been placed in a Google Drive for your review. Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Clean Energy Development Board. The appointment of Otis Williams, who resides in the 8th Ward. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Kara Spencer, Mayor.
Alderwoman from the 8th, you're recognized on Mayor Spencer's appointment to the Clean Energy Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I ask that we favorably consider this appointment. Otis Williams, I believe, will be a great asset, we know well, to serve on this board, and I have no further comments beyond that.
Are you making an emotion to approve the mayor's appointment?
Yes, I move that we approve the mayor's appointment.
Is there a second? It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 8th, seconded by the Alderman from the 4th. Is there any discussion? Alderwoman from the 12th?
Um, yes.
Alderwoman from the 12th, you're recognized.
I understood, but I heard a whole bunch of talking. Somebody doesn't have their mic muted, so I was trying to give them a chance to. The Clean Energy Board, I believe, is a citywide board, and I thought we were sending citywide nominations to committee. And although I support Mr. Williams, I would request that we send this to the committee.
Alderwoman from the 8th, are you wanting to continue with your motion or are you willing to send this appointment to committee?
I think the Alderwoman from the 12th, for that context, while I do support the appointment, I'm happy to follow in the previous practices of sending citywide appointments to committee. So with that, I am happy if there is no further support on that to send it to committee.
Okay, we first need to which our motion and our second.
And I will withdraw my, and I will withdraw my motion to approve the appointment.
Alderman from the 4th, will you withdraw your second?
Withdrawn.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman. And Alderwoman from the 8th, do you have a preference on committee? Think this in the past has gone to the HUDs committee.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President, and I will follow the previous practice and send that to the HUDs committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 8th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we send the mayor's appointment to the Clean Energy Development Board, to the HUDs committee. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Syndicate Trust Community Improvement District. The appointment of John St. Clair. I'm sorry, John Sinclair. The appointment of Thomas Smallwood. The appointment of Benjamin Gamble. The appointment of Mary Ashley Mendick. And the appointment of Louise, I'm sorry, Nicholas Lucetta. I respectfully request of your approval, sincerely, Kara Spencer, Mayor.
Alderman from the 14th, you are recognized on Mayor Spencer's appointment to the Syndicate Trust Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I move to approve the members for the Trust Committee, Community Improvement District.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we approve Mayor Spencer's appointments to the Syndicate Trust Community Improvement District. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city officials.
Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of our informal calendars? Anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the 12th, you are recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill 92 for first reading.
Madam President, members of the Board, I move to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill 92 onto the calendar for first reading.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 12th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill 92 for first reading. Sir, this is a non-debatable motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Devote. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Cox Antwee.
Aye.
Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Con. Alderman Devote. Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. 14 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the 12th. If you could please place Board Bill 92 at the end of the first reading of board bills.
So noted.
Alderman from the 14th, you are now recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes introducing Board Bills 93, 94, and 95 for first reading.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I move to suspend the rules for Board Bill 93, 94, and 95 to the first reading calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 11th, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bills 93, 94, and 95 for first reading. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Devote. Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Cox Antwee.
Aye.
Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. 14 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the 14th. If you could please place Board Bills 93, 94, and 95 at the end of the first reading of board bills.
So noted.
First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 90, number not used this session. Board Bill 91, introduced by Alderman Oldenburg, an ordinance making tobacco shops as defined therein a conditional zoning district A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and L. Board Bill Number 92, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus, and ordinance temporarily closing Weta Avenue between East Clarence and Poles at both two ends of the Weta and temporarily closed Pope Avenue between Weta and North Third North Broadway feet north of the North curb line of Pope and North Broadway containing emergency clause. Board Bill 93, sponsored by Alderman Aldridge, and the co-sponsors include Mayor Kara Spencer, President Green, Alderwoman Sanyay, and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Esmond and Portman, authorizing and directing an appropriation in total amount of $1 million of RAM settlement funds for deposit into the impacted tenants fund as authorized by ordinance 71840 and revised by ordinance 72002, containing the severability and emergency clause. Board Bill 94, sponsored by Alderwoman Sanyay and the following co-sponsors: Mayor Spencer, President Green, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, and Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Esmond and Portman appropriating the sum of $3,365,535.05 of the RAM settlement funds for the purpose of supporting winter shelter needs for unhoused residents, authorizing and directing the Director Department of Human Services to execute or purchase against existing contracts as may be necessary to expand funds containing the severability and emergency clause. Board Bill 95, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, and the co-sponsors include Mayor Spencer and President Green. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Esmond and Portman appropriating the sum of $9,350,000 of a one-time unreserved general operating reserve funds for deposit into the Tornado Relief and Recovery Fund for the purpose of supporting winter-related emergency shelter and additional tornado disaster relief to support housing of residents impacted by the May 16, 2025 tornado containing the severability and emergency clause. That's the extent of board bills, first reading of board bills.
We could please assign 92 to Public Infrastructure and 93, 94, and 95 to Budget.
I'm sorry, to?
Budget.
Okay.
Alderwoman from the 11th.
Can you hear me? There we are. Good morning. Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I would like to be added as a co-sponsor on 92, 93, 94, and 95.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
Thank you.
Reference to committee of board bills.
To the reference, I'm sorry, to the HUDs Committee, Board Bill 91. To Public Infrastructure, 92. To Budget, 93 and 94. That's the extensive, extent of reference to committee of board bills.
And 95 to Budget.
And 95, I'm sorry.
Second reading and report to standing committees.
The following board bills were reported out of HUDs Committee with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 84, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman Sanyay, Alderman Browning, and Alder Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Esmond and Portman, authorizing the mayor to submit the 2026 Annual Action Plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, authorizing the mayor and comptroller to enter into and execute the agreements with HUD for the receipt of 2026 Community Development Block Grant, Community Development Block Grant, Disaster Recovery Home Investment Partnership, Emergency Solution Grant, Housing Opportunities for Person with AIDS Funds, authorizing the Director of the Community Development Administration, Department of Human Services, Department of Health to execute contracts as may be necessary to expand funds containing a severability and emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of Public Infrastructure with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 13, sponsored by Alderwoman Sanyay, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 58239, approved February the 19th, 1981, which previously vacated the East-West Alley located between St. Vincent and Park Avenue on the 2700 block. This ordinance restores all public surface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel to the city of St. Louis pertaining to this track. Board Bill 75, sponsored by Alderwoman Sanyay. An ordinance establishing a four-way stop site at the intersection of Cherokee and Virginia Avenue, the Ben Park West and Gravore Park neighborhoods in the 7th Ward to regulate traffic traveling in all directions containing emergency clause. Board Bill 85, sponsored by Alderwoman Sanyay, pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on various blocks throughout the 7th Ward. Board Bill 89, sponsored by Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Switzer, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Orion, and Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service of the City of St. Louis to establish multiple public works and improvement of projects for the Cass Avenue Multi-Model Courtyard Transformation Phase 1, Traffic Management Enhancement Phase 9 on Skinker, McCaslin, and the Christie-Greenway Phase 2 within the city of St. Louis, containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of the second reading report of standing committees.
Alderman from the 9th, you're recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of moving Board Bill 89 to the regular or sorry, the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we suspend the rules to move Board Bill 89 to the perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 9th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 11th, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of moving Board Bill 89 to the perfection consent calendar. This is a non-debatable motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Devote. Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Cox Antwee.
Aye.
Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. I'm sorry, was that aye? No. Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. 15 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the 9th. If you could please place Board Bill 89 on the perfection consent calendar.
So noted.
Report to special committees.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 15, board bills for perfection consent.
Board Bill 89, sponsored by Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Switzer, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Orion, and Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service of the City of St. Louis to establish a multiple public works and improvement projects for Cass Avenue Multi-Model Courtyard Transformation Phase 1, Traffic Management Enhancement Phase 9 on Skinker, McCaslin, and the Christie-Greenway Phase 2 within the city of St. Louis, containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of board bills for a perfection consent calendar.
Alderwoman. All right, Alderman. Alderwoman from the 10th. Okay, Alderman from the 14th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I move to adopt the perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we adopt the perfection consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 17, report of engrossment.
53 as amended on the floor, 63, 80, 67, 62 as amended on the floor, 78 committee sub, and 82 as amended in committee.
Third reading and final passage of board bills consent.
53 as amended on the floor, 63, 80, and board bill 67.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the third reading and final passage of board bills on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I move that we adopt the bills on the third, sorry, board bills on the third reading, passing consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we adopt the third reading, final passage of board bills. The consent calendar, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderman Orion. Alderman Devote. Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Cox Antwee.
Aye.
Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Browning. 15 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the 10th to third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Alderman from the 3rd.
Thank you, Madam President. Having voted on the prevailing side, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider Board Bill Number 68.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 3rd, seconded by the Alderman from the 9th, that we reconsider Board Bill Number 68. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Devote. Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Cox Antwee.
Aye.
Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Oh.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanyay. 13 aye votes and 2 no votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the 3rd. If you could please place Board Bill 68 at the end of the third reading, final passage of board bills.
So noted.
Third reading and final passage of board bills.
Board Bill 62 as amended on the floor, sponsored by Alderman Devote, an ordinance regulating the operation of golf carts upon the streets, alleys, and public right-of-ways within the city of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 5th, you are recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill 62 as amended on the floor.
We third read and finally pass Board Bill 62 as amended on the floor.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 5th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 62 as amended on the floor. Alderman, you may proceed.
I'll keep this brief. We spent quite a bit of time this past week discussing this bill. In fact, amending it on the floor. This bill does two things. It legalizes what is happening in many, many parts of our city, that is, the operation of golf carts on city streets, while also putting in place reasonable restrictions on that operation. And again, I would ask for your favorable consideration and yes vote on this particular bill.
Alderwoman from the 12th.
Sorry. Madam President, members of the Board, if the Alderman from the 5th, I'm sorry, yeah, 5th, would yield.
The Alderman from the 5th yields questioning from the Alderwoman from the 12th.
Yes.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Alderman. So I, again, went through all of the Missouri Revised State statutes, the state statutes regarding golf carts and other utility vehicles and all-terrain vehicles. And so I could not find any definition of a golf cart except for in Section 304.034. Did you find any other definition of a golf cart in the sorry, Missouri Revised Statutes?
No, Alderman, I did not, because as you noted, there is one statute that speaks to operation of golf carts. And as you identified, that is Section 304.034. Yes, ma'am, correct.
Okay. And in that statute, at the end of the statute, the state identifies and gives us a definition of a golf cart, and it says at the much of what your definition is, except for it says is not capable of exceeding speeds of 20 miles per hour. So that is the state's definition of a golf cart. Are you attempting to override the state statute or how how is it that you use 25 miles an hour when the state statute says 20 miles an hour?
No, Alderwoman, I'm not trying to override anything. We are passing a or we are seeking, or I am seeking to pass a particular board bill governing the operation of these vehicles. And so
Okay.
But, but no, I am not, nor do I think I am overriding in any way state statute.
So if the state statute defines golf carts as anything that is not capable of exceeding speeds of 20 miles per hour, then we come about and say that it is not exceeding 20 twenty-five miles an hour. That is inconsistent with the state statute. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, Alderwoman, I did not hear the end of your question. Can I please ask you to restate it?
You don't even have to plead. I will anyway, I'm just sorry, I'm having, problems with my voice today. I'm saying that your definition of golf cart and the definition of the state for golf cart is different in that the state says that a golf cart is only, if it is not capable of speed exceeding speed of twenty miles per hour, and you say it's a golf cart if it's not capable of exceeding twenty-five miles per hour. So isn't it true that the state statute would override our ordinance? So I don't understand why we're putting twenty-five miles an hour in there in the first place, because the state statute will override that.
I don't believe that we are overriding nor conflicting with state statute, and I don't think this particular state statute would affect our ability to pass and then enforce this particular board bill. To answer your question, to answer your question, to answer your question about why, it is because our experience in the City of St. Louis is that in many instances, these golf carts, these particular vehicles are, I'm trying to think of the word, they are, they are not as they are manufactured, but they are adapted so that they can exceed speeds more than twenty miles an hour. And so it is our experience in the city, in certain neighborhoods, that that calls for the amendment of how golf cart is defined.
It is my experience that when you read this, as using section, and this being the three oh four point oh three four, it defines the state statutes override not only our ordinances, our charter, and many other things. The state has clearly defined golf cart as they have many other things throughout this statute, and it says a golf cart means a motor vehicle that is designed and manufactured for operation on a golf course for supporting or sporting or recreational purposes, and the definitive word, and that is not capable of exceeding speeds of twenty miles per hour. Now, it did not say that it had to be designed that way, so you can buy something that's designed one way, it said it's not capable. So anything that can exceed twenty miles per hour per the state, is not a golf cart. And I would submit that you cannot change the state law, and that that should be, in your ordinance, should be twenty miles an hour. And then my next thing would be, and I agree on this, and you will find out, if anybody takes us to court, you'll find out that the state statute does override. My next thing to you is that, so if it is over twenty miles or twenty-five, depending on if it's the state version of yours, what is that then defined as? If it's a cart that looks like a golf cart, but can go twenty-five miles an hour, or twenty-six miles an hour, then what would that be?
What would it look like?
No, what would it be, how would it be defined? Since, let's say I had a golf cart, I call them all golf carts, but I learned a lot more, so I know a lot more now, but if I had a cart, I mean, I don't call it a golf cart, and it can go twenty-six miles per hour, then following your legislation, that would not be a golf cart. Is that correct?
I would agree with that, because we do define in this particular board bill a golf cart. And I know you're aware of this, but so that all the members of the public who may be watching, understand, we talk in terms of a motorized vehicle designed and manufactured for operation on a golf course or for sporting or recreational purpose. But to answer your specific question, if the vehicle had been altered and redesigned so that it could operate at a mile per hour of twenty-six, for instance, yes, ma'am, that would take us outside of our definition, as stated in this board bill.
And so I will go back again and say, your ordinance does not say "and" that it is not capable, and the state statute does, so they, to me, contemplated that people would change it and gave them the ability to do that, and that would be a golf cart. I think you're five miles off of what you need to do. I think you're going to find that out. Also, you say that the state statute, that you're giving us permission to operate golf carts because, other than this, it was illegal. I looked all over in state statutes for where it showed that golf carts were illegal, any place, the only place that I could find that golf carts were illegal were they could not be driven on, operated at any time on any state or federal highways, but even then may be operated upon such highways in order to cross a portion of the state highway system, which intersects a municipal street. It also said no golf carts or motorized wheelchairs, because they ain't equate, golf carts and motorized wheelchairs should cross any highway at any intersection where the highway being crossed has a posted speed limit of more than forty-five miles an hour. So if the highway is fifty-five or seventy-five or forty-seven miles an hour, even then, then the golf cart could not cross it. But they did give a reasonable way for people to cross the highway if it was not a super-fast highway, and there are some state highways that you could cross, perhaps, that don't have a posted speed of more than forty-five hour, forty-five miles per hour. But my question becomes is, if you're saying that we were meant, that we were not allowed to drive golf carts, and that all these people are driving these carts illegally, why isn't there any place in the state statute that says that? And the only place I can find anything that refers to golf carts, they give us permission to, by resolution or ordinance, to allow persons to operate golf carts or motorized wheelchairs upon any street or highway under the governing body's jurisdiction, but no place that it says we were not allowed. It just says that we could allow it, or we could put rules that pertain to them, but I still don't believe that we can have rules that override the state statute. I think that that is very plain and clear, and whenever we have tried to do something, even when it was within the state statutes, the state statute comes right along and changes it up in Jefferson City, and they've done that on more than one occasion, and with the final result is that we do not have that ability. So moving it up to twenty-five is a mistake to me. Also, I tell you again, it's a mistake to say that cars can drive in the park, but golf carts cannot. That would be the main place, when you have roadways and byways in the park for golf carts to be, and to be able to say a car can drive on the road in the park, but it cannot be done in the parks for golf carts, whatever it is, twenty-five or twenty miles an hour, is a mistake. And I don't own a golf cart, but if I'm a golf cart person, since you're using twenty-five, the state using twenty, whatever it is, I'm just going to ramp my speed back right up over that, and that's not going to address anything, because I think this is far-reaching and overreaching in doing that, especially for parks. I really do believe that there's a reason about streets, but when you look at the bicycle paths, that should be a place that golf carts can be. When you look at electric bicycles, that's a place that golf carts can be. There has to be a path, if we're going to say that certain other vehicles that are motorized can do this, then there has to be a path for golf cart people too. Not me, I don't drive a golf cart, but I think that your ordinance is incorrect in that setting the speed of twenty-five miles an hour directly in contradiction to the state law, and I also think it's overreaching to say that a golf cart cannot be driven in the park. I totally agree with your interpretation that they should not be parked on sidewalks. Bicycles should not be ridden on sidewalks. I will agree with that. Some people who reached out to me didn't like that I agreed with that part, I do, but I think you're making a mistake, and I think you're giving, putting a hole in your ordinance that will be able to be sued, and the people will win, because you cannot override state law, and there's no reason for golf carts not to be driven in parks, which often have a lower speed posted, so there's no reason for that. O'Fallon Park, the alderwoman from the eleventh, should be able to drive her golf cart anytime she wants to in O'Fallon Park or Fairground Park, and there should be no penalty if somebody's saying she cannot, and any of her other constituents, or if I decide to get a golf cart. We should be able to do that without you saying this is a problem that's coming one of these days, and I differ with you. I think this is an overreaching piece of legislation, and for that, for that reason, I will be voting no again. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the fifth, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the dialogue that we have had both this past week, as well as in committee and in the weeks leading up to today with respect to this particular board bill. And again, I ask for your favorable consideration and a vote of yes on Board Bill sixty-two as amended on the floor.
It's been moved by the alderman from the fifth, seconded by the alderman from the fourteenth, the third read and finally pass board bills as amended on the floor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Devote.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanier.
Aye.
Alderwoman Cox Antwee.
No.
Alderman Browning.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys.
No.
Alderwoman Tyus.
No.
Alderwoman Boyd.
No.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Ten aye votes and five no votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the alderman from the fifth to third read and finally pass Board Bill sixty-two as amended on the floor.
Board Bill seventy-eight committee sub, sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer, and the following cosponsors, President Green, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Sanier, Alderwoman Cox Antwee, and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. An ordinance updating the forestry division's regulation relating to weeds, native plants, and other vegetation at the City of St. Louis containing the definitions, reportings, abatement, enforcement, and separability provisions.
Alderwoman from the first, you are recognized on the third read and final passage of Board Bill seventy-eight committee substitute.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to third read and finally pass Board Bill seventy-eight committee substitute.
It's been moved by the alderwoman from the first, seconded by the alderman from the ninth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill seventy-eight committee substitute. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, and a special thank you to Alderman Browning, who carried this bill for me last week. I know there was plenty of discussion then, so I won't belabor the point, but this bill does update the forestry ordinance around vegetation, as well as make more clear and effective the fines and fees around forestry violations, which is a huge need in our city. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Vinnie is freaking out, so if you have any questions, you're a little late, because it's the third reading, but I'm happy to answer them anyway, and I really appreciate any consideration and all the support that this bill has received, especially from Caitlin Smith, who is really the architect of this in Michael Browning's office. So thank you so much, and again, happy to answer any questions. He's calmed down. I guess he was embarrassed. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Thank you. I don't want the alderwoman from the first to yield, because she has a much important, more important job, but I wanted to know that we did have discussion and questions, and so my vote remains a present, because after this, actually, the board hearing from last week, I then got lots of response from people who do not like gardens and front yards, very concerned about that, wanted to know whether it override, if they had a neighborhood improvement rule, and so I'm not familiar with all of that, but also got in my ward a lot, got some places where people got trimmed front yards, and they don't want front yards with tomatoes or anything like that, and they most certainly don't want it in the tree line. They feel like the city has given approval for people to come in and to change their way of life that they've had for a long time, and not give them any consideration that everybody on the block has one kind of lawn and somebody else has another. So for those, that reason, and then I also don't think that we can enforce the part about the tree line, although the tree line belongs to the city, we can't stop people from cutting it. There's nothing we can do, so even if somebody plants something there, people can actually go and cut it down. I don't encourage that, and I've encouraged neighbors to try to sit down and have a conversation about what they feel about is a proper front yard and what should be planted there, but there are neighborhoods that have longstanding traditions of how a front yard should look, and then all of a sudden, when people pop up with something, it's like, even with houses, the new black houses that are going around in the community makes everybody want to have a historical district just so that they cannot do that kind of thing. You don't want purple houses or blue houses popping up, so that's the same thing with lawns, and I will be voting present. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved by the alderwoman from the first, seconded by the alderman from the ninth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill committee substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Devote.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanier.
Aye.
Alderwoman Cox Antwee.
Aye.
Alderman Browning.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Present.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Thirteen aye votes and two voted present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the alderwoman from the first to third read and finally pass Board Bill seventy-eight committee.
Board Bill eighty-two as amended in committee, sponsored by Alderman Aldridge, and ordinance authorizing the comptroller and the City of St. Louis to execute a contract for sale of real estate, and authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller of the City of St. Louis to execute upon receipt of and in consideration of the sum of two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars and other good and valuable consideration. A quitclaim deed to Remise, Release, and Forever Quitclaim until nine hundred North Tucker Building LLC, a Missouri limited liability company, its successors and assigns certain city-owned property located in City Block five-three-four, which property is commonly known as eleven thirty-four and eleven thirty-eight Dr. Martin Luther King Drive, and the City of St. Louis, Missouri.
Alderman from the fourteenth, you are recognized on the third read and final passage of Board Bill eighty-two as amended in committee.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to third read and final pass Board Bill eighty-two as amended in committee.
It's been moved by the alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by the alderwoman from the seventh, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill eighty as amended in committee. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Last week, as well, like the other bills, we had a lengthy conversation on the selling of Inaco Plaza, and I would open up for any discuss.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the, Alderwoman from the twelfth.
I'm sorry, was there, at first you started as Alderman, was there a person before me?
Alderman Browning started to get up, but you beat him to it, so.
Well, no, let me, okay, let, please, I would yield to the Browning, Alderman Browning, because he did a lot of the research, that was good research, and I appreciate it.
Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not going to go long today. I know we had a lot of discussion about this last week, and I just want to again state that I do believe this is subject to Article twenty-six of the Charter, which clearly states that anything that is principally used, any land owned by the city that is principally used or held out for use as a park, must go to a citywide vote. I think it's important that we do follow the Charter and really put this to the people. I also think that helps alleviate us as elected officials from having to do, so if this bill was doing that, you know, I'd be more likely to vote for it, because I think then we would be sending it to the correct body for decision. That being said, I myself remain opposed to selling our public parks. I think it's really important that we preserve our green spaces. Once they're gone, they're very hard to replace, and we have ample evidence that this was laid out as a park. It was created by the LCRAs in nineteen eighty-one, they have that authority via state statute, and it was dedicated by Mayor Shamel. and it was dedicated by Mayor Shamel at that time. So, I think that it's very clear that this was held out for use as a park. There's multiple things, including our city plat map, our G.I.S. systems, our city website, a lot of cases that can be made that this is a park subject to that vote. And then, I'll also say that personally, I think of myself as an urbanist, and I think anyone who does think of themselves as an urbanist should really question if a parking lot is development. Because turning a park, a green space, a public space that people can use into a private space that a developer can profit off of feels not only antithetical, you know, anti-Charter, but it also feels anti-people. And so, I personally am not in favor of selling this park at a price of $275,000 when we know we spent $1.1 million on it in 2009. Whether those are federal dollars or otherwise, it doesn't matter. The city chose to allocate that money to that project and create that park again after originally dedicating it back in the 80s. So, this is a long history of this being a public space, and I really do encourage everyone to think about what it means to create a park by ordinance, as the city councilor has argued, because if a park can be created by ordinance, and that is the most important thing, then it only takes eight votes to undo an ordinance, and that means that we could just circumvent the Charter. And I do not think that was the intention of the people who framed that Charter amendment and the people who voted 70% in this city to pass that Charter amendment. With that, I'll just close by saying that we really don't know what we've got until it's gone. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 12th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I'd echo everything the Alderman from the 9th said, and add in addition to that, those people who would argue that it's not a park, the people who made the city Charter amendment recognized that people would try to argue that because they went and did research to find out, just as the Alderman from the 9th staff did, that all our parks, many of them in our own wards, are not created by ordinances. And so, they did not use the wording that it has to be a park. It's the wording for the Charter is that as of April, because it was in April of 2007 when this election was held, is hereby owned by the city or any agency or instrumentality of the city, which is principally used or held out for the use of a public park is protected. They did not say it had to be a public park. It could be principally used. You can create a pathway by walking- At Washington, we had a- When I was in law school, there was a way to go across this field, a green field, and they kept putting up signs that said, "Don't walk across this pathway." But we kept walking across that pathway to students, and pretty soon, they just put some paving stones and sidewalk there because that was created. That's how you can create a park or something that's held out to be a park. You can also, in real estate, do what's called adverse possession. If you open and hostilely take a piece of land and you claim it and you treat it as your own, and you're hostile with it, and you let it be known that you think it's yours in Missouri, if you do that for 10 years, that becomes your property. In other states, it's less than that. This park was clearly held out to be a park, but even if it wasn't used by a ordinance, it was held out to be a park. And on top of that, they anticipated, they being the people who helped write this Charter, they anticipated that the Board of Aldermen would think that they were more powerful than they were. So, the part that I love is Section 2, which says that once this becomes an ordinance, and I've already written the letter, have it sitting here, once this becomes an ordinance, the Charter mandates our clerk, who was here and knows about what happened, because he was the Alderman when this happened, mandates that our clerk take the ordinance and certify that the Board of Aldermen intends to try to sell, alter, amend a piece of property that has been held out as a park, not had to be a park, but held that out as a park. But I find it really hard not to think of it as a park. It's when I went on the website this morning, and it still comes to the Department of St. Louis' website, and when you go to December 9, 1981 Post Dispatch, there's then Shamel unveiling a plaque. He was the mayor then for the park and giving credit to Intercote. So, that actually is a park, but even if it wasn't, if it's held out, that the clerk has to then certify that we intend to go around the Charter and try to sell the property. And then, it is mandated when he sends it over to the Board of Election that the Board of Election still has to have an election anyway. So, that's why we should be doing it the correct way because it's still going to go to a vote anyway. And there are people already set to do this because they're very upset because they wrote this very well because it was such a long, arduous process of fighting with B.J.C. about the land that is right over there that they used the helicopters in the tennis court, which was part of Forest Park. So, they were very upset with that argument and fight, and they wanted to make sure that our parks were no longer subject to a sale without the people knowing what we were doing. And as we talk about green energy and for the next generation and recycling and all of this thing and using smaller things, then we also have to be careful about preserving our parks. We want that young man that the Alderwoman from the 1st is holding now to have parks. And I always remember the first time I ever went to New York, and when I came back to St. Louis and saw all the green space, how thankful I was that I lived in the Midwest because although they had that great big park in the middle of New York, they don't have the green space and trees like we do, and that's very important. And we don't think that's important. We at least, even if you want to vote for, if you believe in it, we at least ought to follow the Charter. So, for the city councilor to be arguing that it's not a park is disingenuous because it doesn't require it to be a park. And I've asked any other lawyers who I could talk to, where does it say it has to be a park? It does not. So, that argument does not hold water. And also, that we will put our clerk in the position of having to certify that we intend to violate the city Charter, and then the Board of Election will have to have an election anyway. And we should have just written this legislation to say, "We want to put it to the people if you want to sell this." And I want to say also, kudos to the Alderwoman from the 9th because I agree, when you pay that much for a piece of land and then you sell it for $100,000 or $200,000, that's despicable, and that's misuse of taxpayer money, and that should not happen. And I will not say that parking lots are not important. They are. We want to keep our corporate citizens in St. Louis if we can, but we also want to have parks. And they don't always have trees and things like that. But when I got to read the article, and I had to get out a- My glasses and something else to amplify this piece of Post Dispatch literature that was given to us, but in it, they talk about where the trees are planted, along what areas they were planted, and it talks about the city maintaining it. So, I don't know why Mr. Garvin didn't read this article. And in fact, Mr. Garvin, I don't know if he was here, but he's been here for a long time. If he wasn't here, was close to the time he was being here. And he knows that well that it doesn't have to be a park, but it was designated by Park and was declared that by the then-mayor of the City of St. Louis. And then, if we all have to have ordinances for our parks, then we better get to finding out which parks are not by ordinance and then changing that. And I don't think that is required. If you use something long enough, it's been a park. And even though they fenced it in, as the sponsor would talk about, that doesn't make it not be a park anymore. We had the park across from the City Hall fenced in for three or four years. That didn't stop it from being a park. In fact, City Hall was fenced in, and that didn't stop it from being a park. Intercote is a park, and I appreciate the work that was done by the Alderman and the staff from the 9th, and I will continue to vote no for that. And I do not think that we should be selling our parks at all. We need our green space, and that's one of the things that makes St. Louis a great city. I went to an event last night at the Chase Park Plaza where we talked about celebrating 250 years of the 4th of July and the city is going to have this big place. And we want to celebrate our green space all over the City of St. Louis. Again, I would ask people to think about what we're doing and why is it that we don't want to have an election? Don't we trust that the citizens in our city know if they want to lose a park or not? I think we should have to prove- We should have to submit it to the voters to make sure that they are in align with what we want to do. We get elected. There shouldn't be nothing wrong with putting this to an election except for that we think that we don't want that kind of information about how much money we spent to be out there and then say what we're going to do with it. And we don't want to have to take the chance that the citizens will say no. But those same, almost 60-something percent that voted no are probably those people going to vote no and bring their friends. And so, I don't think this is going to hold up to scrutiny, and it's not holding up to scrutiny right now. Thank you so much. I have nothing else to say.
Alderwoman from the 8th.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I also don't want to belabor the discussion I know we had last week regarding this legislation, but I do just want to raise a couple of things that I know the Alderman from the 14th spoke about, which is the comment from the people in the residence that do live around the plaza, and as the Alderwoman that also shares the eastern portion of downtown. I know myself, from the residents that I have in the area, and when you ask them about the uses of public space and green spaces and parks they have in our community, this plaza has never been named one. And in fact, this plaza has been quite a challenge for the residents that live around this area in this community from a very long time. I think the Alderman from the 14th did a great job of getting testimony from all of the adjoining businesses and institutions and areas around just the perimeter of the plaza. And I believe, and I know the Alderman can speak for himself, that all of those perimeter businesses as well agreed with the city's decision to sell the remaining portion of this property. So, I just want to challenge my colleagues as we talk about the importance of listening to the voices of the people and the voices of the public. We do have voices from the people that are in this community. And I think while we talk about bringing something to a general public view, I think we must recognize that for the 14th Ward and the areas and the portions of the 8th Ward that are north of Washington Avenue, often those voices go unheard and unrecognized and are quite frequently outweighed by people that never have really ventured in the area that we are talking about to actually witness it firsthand. So, I do just want to make sure, as my colleagues and I are having this discussion and taking this vote today, that we remember those people as well, and we hear them on what they're saying is best to happen in their community.
Alderwoman from the 12th.
Madam President, members of the board. I used to work downtown at the library when I first moved here, and this was before all the gentrification that has happened. I have been one that's always been appalled that they closed Reverend Larry Rice's place because when I worked down there in the 70s, nobody was downtown except for Reverend Rice. Gay men and women were there and the people who came into the library. One of the things that we have seen happen is that, and the Black Aldermen know this because we've had many discussions about it before many of these people came here, is that as the homeless population was moved away from the gentrification, is that they pushed all of these things into North St. Louis. And so, when you look at the list of where homeless shelters and things are, they're in North St. Louis. And so, it's interesting to me to hear the 14th Ward Alderman talk about what his people don't want to see or be around when many of the homeless population was there before. And you also have not had considerations about other neighborhoods and what they want. So, if you want that consideration, that should be the conversation. And I would go on to say that if something is already there, that's something that you deal with, not just close down like it's what has been going on downtown, but you don't push it into one part of the city, which is what has been happening. And so, when we, before we became 14, we had 28. And one of the things that the 12 of us agreed on that was really strange is that they pushed everything into North St. Louis. And it wasn't just an agreement, it was actually a listing of what was done. So, whether you came from one side of the tracks or the other, they pushed it all into North St. Louis. It is my contention that all parts of the city should have shelters and homeless shelters, but that the park was there for the homeless and anybody else before gentrification happened, and gentrification should not push it out. What should happen is that we might have to have a security guard. We should clean it up. Of course, it's going to look bad if you put a fence around it for years and then say, "Now, look how hard, horrible it looks." That is the same thing that happened to the library, the park behind the library, the main library. So, they put a fence, then they fixed it up, and then they came with all these things about how you couldn't sit in the park during the middle of the day because they were going to be cleaning the park. I went over there so many times and took pictures of myself sitting there. Nobody ever came and cleaned the park. That was to keep the homeless out. And I do not think that the homeless have a right to make it so that it's unbearable for people to live. But I also think that the people who moved down there, especially if you move downtown, that was a homeless population there, which it was, and there was Larry Rice, that you don't just move it away from you and your group of people and say, "That's all right if it's someplace else." One of the things that the Black Caucus did when the former mayor became into office in- She came in April 2021. We sent a letter in June of 2021 that remains unanswered addressing the homeless population, saying, "This is something that is not only citywide, but regional, metropolitans, that we should have a meeting, talk about how we address this in a fair manner, but not to keep pushing everything in North St. Louis." So, I do understand what you're saying, Alderwoman from the 8th, but the Alderman from the 14th has been very careless in not considering what other people want in their wards and then saying, "Oh, but we don't want this here." I would prefer that they stay right by the businesses than at people's houses. Now, I understand, one of my favorite people in the world is the Alderman, former Alderman from the 5th, Mr. James Page. And I know where he lives, so I know he's very close to this. But the people were there before, and the plaza was there before, and the plaza was a park. And so, even though they, if they want it to go, then what the people should do is encourage the election to happen, and then they go out and get enough people to vote for it, and then that's what will happen. But if it doesn't happen, then we should not sell the park. Because we should. And so, that's what we're looking at. And even if we do sell the park, I think that when you're looking at what we spent on it to sell it for such a small amount is fiscally irresponsible, is the word I would say. And I'm sorry that we would do something like this. So, I don't want people to be bothered. I want downtown to be a productive place. I've watched longer than anybody the billions of dollars we poured into the city at the expense of North St. Louis, by the way. I found, I often talked about that these articles that they did when I first came in '91, I actually found them yesterday. So, I want to share them with you. They took block grant money that was meant for other parts of the city, not only North St. Louis, they spent it downtown. They spent it in the central quarter. And so, then they said, "What's wrong with North St. Louis?" Nothing wrong with the money if you had given the money where it was supposed to be. So, I say that to say, this park had a lot of federal money, and it is a park. a lot of federal money and it is a park. And so I know the new people come and say, well, I don't like that. That is one of the problems of gentrification that people all over, not just St. Louis, talk about, is that when people gentrify stuff, then all of a sudden, they try to change everything. But I will always know that when nobody else cared about downtown, because it was only Mansion Center down there when I worked down there, is that we had a healthy group of gay activists that would come to the park, and then we had the homeless that would come to the park. I mean, I'm sorry, to the library. And so they've been there before everybody else, and I am hesitant to move that population out someplace else. Let them have a park and service that park correctly because St. Patrick is right there. So that is why I, and former alderman Page and I have had healthy discussions about this, because I do not believe that you move something away. And this was already here, and that is unfair, because that's saying, we don't have to put up with this, okay? And other people do. And there are challenges when you live next door to homeless things. And there's challenges when they move shelters next to your house and you weren't anticipating that. But if it was already there in the first place, that's part of what you bought when you came downtown or you lived downtown, and it should not be pushed on other neighborhoods. Everybody should address population, the homeless population in a sensitive manner. And the person that I've seen that addressed it the best has been the former alderwoman from the nineteenth, Marlene Davis, did such a good job in near St. Louis University, that you don't see the homeless population hanging out. And she did shelters, and she, and I've often said she should be the commissioner of homeless for the city of St. Louis, because she showed us how to do it right. And if you drive down Washington Lotus right now, there are plenty of places that she has had, she built right so that people don't hang out and that people are not harassed, because I don't want the population downtown to be harassed. But I don't want us to harass a population that already was there before any of us got here. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the first.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. I believe this is pretty clear. Actually, the charter says that this kind of sale requires a public vote, and I think it's incumbent upon all of us to follow our most important governing document. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, then aldermen from the fourteenth, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I do appreciate all my colleagues' input on this and also all of the activists and people that have been writing in on this. I want to kind of bring it back to what this actually is. I know we were just talking about unhoused, us closing this down, is moving to unhoused. I will note and always stand and support our unhoused community. The fourteenth ward alone has the most unhoused individuals shelters. And I know when we attempted to pass legislation at the Board of Aldermen around that, we didn't get that across the finish line. We recently just opened up another unhoused shelter, Peter and Paul, which is housing hundreds of people that are not only unhoused, but it's also been impacted by the tornado. Right by this plaza is Biddle House. Not too far from there is also another unhoused place. So again, you know, one of the things I want to thank the alderwoman from the eighth for bringing up is, you know, we're now talking about this plaza, and I know a lot of people in the last week or two has went down here, made videos, you know, toured it. I'm glad it's bringing attention to this plaza. I hope those, that same energy also, you know, come to the fourteenth ward as a whole and not just this plaza, because as somebody who lives down there and has been speaking to residents, as Jamie said, this isn't something that even serves as a purpose of a park. Nobody has utilized this place for us residents as a park. And I want to also thank St. Louis Public Schools, St. Patrick Center, that sits right next to this plaza, who wrote a letter of support, Interco Trust, the Globe Building, Oliver Properties, Washington Ave, Sid North. And they have been working, a lot of times when we talk about downtown, I appreciate the Sid North that is actually focusing in, and Mr. Burglin, how do we develop the northern part of downtown, which, just to be honest, is black folks. It is not the people that live off Wash Ave, but they're intentionally trying to figure out, how do we develop more of just that northern part when you get north of Delmar, where more people of color stay? As well as I want to thank downtown Ford for all those letters of support. You know, there's a lot of back and forth that we believe is a park, a plaza, our city councilor, if this were to get sued, like many other legislations that we have passed at this Board of Aldermen, has been sued on. And like I say, I don't legislate on getting sued, I just legislate in what I think is right. We have a city councilor who's willing to step up and fight for us. Also, the register has stated there is not an ordinance on this park. If, you know, now the energy is to make sure out of the several parks that do not have ordinance, we put them into law, I absolutely agree. We should do that, but that's not the issue on this matter, as well as the Parks Department not maintaining this. So with that, Madam President, members of the board, I would ask for your support on this, so that this not utilized plaza can be developed for bringing development down into the area, as we're looking also to bring tenants around the surrounding area. And I want to thank everybody's input and opinion on this conversation over the last several weeks. And I close.
It's been moved by the aldermen from the fourteenth, seconded by the alderwoman from the seventh, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill eighty-two as amended in committee. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
No.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Devote. Alderwoman Velazquez.
Hi.
Alderwoman Sanye.
Hi.
Alderwoman Cox-Antwee.
Hi.
Alderman Browning.
No.
Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard.
Hi.
Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
No.
Alderwoman Boyd.
No.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
No.
Ten I votes and five no votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the alderman from the fourteenth to third read and finally pass Board Bill eighty-two as amended in committee.
Board Bill sixty-eight sponsored by Alderman Browning and co-sponsored Alderwoman Keys. An ordinance renewing the previous blighting determination made by ordinance number six-six-eight-four-seven and ordinance number six-six-nine-eight-five, as renewed by ordinance number six-eight-seven-five-four and ordinance number seven-zero-one-one-nine and ordinance number seven-one-two-one-four for the Cortex West redevelopment areas, such as Cortex West Redevelopment Corporation can continue to exercise its rights to use eminent domain granted by the city to complete the redevelopment plan.
Alderman from the ninth, you are recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill sixty-eight.
Thank you. Thank you to my colleagues who were willing to reconsider this bill. We had a little bit of a mix-up last Friday where some votes were missing, and I appreciate the chance to bring this up again. I won't go long. Just a reminder that this is a renewal of a development tool for the Cortex District. It's required by Missouri statute that we renew the ability for Cortex to use blight determination to continue to the development of the two-hundred-acre area that they were charged with developing by the city back in the early thousands. This development tool is necessary to continue the success of the district, and that is why the Planning Commission unanimously recommended that we extend this tool so that the district can continue to deliver results for our city. Since its beginning, Cortex has added hundreds of companies and thousands of jobs to the St. Louis area, right here in the city. And it's turning a formerly vacant and underutilized industrial area into something that brings innovation and opportunity. I'm happy to take any questions from my colleagues.
Do he want to make?
He may make the motion.
And I think I need to move to read and finally pass.
Correct.
Board Bill sixty-eight.
It's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderman from the second, that we third read and finally pass Board eighty-eight. Need further discussion? Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Yes, Madam President, members of the board, if the alderman from the ninth yield.
The alderman from the ninth yields, questioning from the alderwoman from the twelfth.
Yes.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you. Alderman, so it has been your testimony that they've never had to use eminent domain, right?
That's my understanding, that they have not used it yet. But this is something we went over in committee. Sorry, it's been a couple of weeks since we went over in committee.
So, and so my question would be, and I told you, I have a difference that I don't think that we should be giving eminent domain to private companies or not-for-profits. I think if you need eminent domain, it should come back to the city and then we should sparingly use it. In the years I've been here, maybe I've put it maybe in three or four bills, and it's three or four more I might have coming up. But we never had to go to a full sale because it is used as a way to bring people to the table. So is that the reason that you still want eminent domain in the, to be retained by the Cortex? Is the ability to bring people to the table?
To be clear, that's the reasoning that's been stated in committee. I know that that is something that Cortex is committed to, to make sure they continue to deliver for the area. And that is why the Planning Commission recommended that they extend the tool, because when you have an area that is coming up, you get what we call speculators. We get people who sit on property and then say, charge unfair prices because they know that they've got something that is in the way of that progress. You know, there's always a situation where there's a use of land that is not the highest use of that land. And so when you have something like, you know, a vacant parking lot or something with a clouded title, this is helpful in order to get that area redeveloped. I know I don't have to remind you, Alderwoman, of what Cortex used to look like. And I think that they've got a proven track record of bringing progress and bringing new buildings, new jobs, new companies to St. Louis. And so that's why we want to continue to give them this tool so they can fulfill that agreement they have with the city to develop the area.
So I do remember, and I would say they got too much TIF, too much tax abatement, too much redevelopment. And as I said yesterday, I'd found the paperwork that I will share with you all. The Post-Dispatch did a great job about the misuse of funds that were supposed to be used in North St. Louis and other places that got used downtown and in the central quarter. So this is my question to you, then, why, if we can just bring, if we have a redevelopment area, we can designate that as such, and we put eminent domain in it, why do we need to give it to the developer itself instead of keeping it with the city? Can you explain that to me? That's what I never understood. If you need to use it, I've had it, in fact, I had it in my Snooks bill, after we had had long conversations with a person who owned a piece of land that was vacant forever, and they were unrealistic, we did put it in the bill, and they did come to the table. But that was through the city. What is it, the need for private developers or not-for-profits or whatever to have eminent domain?
I think there's two-fold reasons. I think that, one, it's so that it can expedite the process and add some certainty to it. We know that currently, when things have to go through the political process, not only do they take a long time, but there's some uncertainty there. And the other reason that I think it's necessary is because the city, when it created Cortex, it got together these five institutions, you know, UMSO, SLU, Wash U, BJC, the Botanical Garden. All of these institutions, if you map them out, kind of sit around the district and have located themselves in the city. And we appreciate their investment and the fact that they have come here and decided to stay in the city, and then to go beyond that and help develop and bring jobs, bring opportunity. I know that it feels like a private entity shouldn't have this power, but when you see what they've done with it and what they've been able to do with it, you know, forty-two buildings in the district, five hundred and seventy-four companies, fifty-seven hundred jobs. That's such a benefit to our city. And they're only, they've only been doing this for the last ten, fifteen years. They still have some room to go. I'm happy to, anyone who's curious, I'm happy to take them down, and we can walk around the area, and I can show the, you know, the area at the corner of Sarah and Duncan, which is a stalled construction project that died during the pandemic. It's not even half-completed, it's just got a foundation and that's it, and the ground. There's, again, vacant parking lots and all sorts of things that still could be improved. I'd like to see that area continue to bring jobs for our city, continue to bring progress for our city, and continue to bring innovation. I mean, in Cortex, we might discover the cure to Alzheimer's disease. We might make advances in cancer research. We have companies that have brought diagnosis abilities for COVID via a device that just senses molecules in the air. I mean, remember in the pandemic, you used to have to shove a swab halfway into your brain and to test for COVID, and now we can just simply do it with this device. And that is the kind of innovation that we see coming out of this district. So I guess my answer to you, Alderwoman, is that I believe that Cortex has earned the city's trust on this and continues to deliver results for our city.
And so I want to say to you, I heard your answer was in the first part of it. The rest of it was a gut commercial. I am not opposed to what the Cortex has done. I'm opposed to the power that we gave them. And your answer was the political climate could change, and the next alderperson may not want to sponsor eminent domain, so they want to control the political process. And that's also part of the problem that I have with it. I liked that they had to come back up and ask for it again. And again, reasonable people would give it to them if it was reasonable. But there's always that one time when they're not reasonable. And unfortunately, in African-American communities, eminent domain, the central quarter that you now represent, when I moved here, I lived in that, and they did a lot of eminent domain up and down the fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three hundred blocks, Waterman, Pershing, and all of that that you see, with big promises, which, oh, we're going to bring the people back. Many, many black people live there. They never brought them back. So it is not something that my community embraces, because zoning has been a way to keep them away from things or keep them out of things, or even in the area that I now represent. I never did, but I actually represent the Shelley V. Kramer House, which is very important about preventing certain colored peoples from living on a street. I live on a street that had a restrictive covenant about black people not being able to live there, Mather Place, years ago, that's what it was. So I like to see that things come back up and you take a look at it, and that people are not, who are not equally yoked with the powerful, don't get run over a steamroll. Now, this, you say has not happened in this case, and that's good, but it's also this very potential for it will happen, and then there's nobody to protect the people. So I like the coming, the bringing it back before the board. I do not like the St. Louis University, who I attended and graduated from. I do not like Wash U, school of law that I attended and graduated from. I do not believe that they should have that power as UMSO or any of the others. And I would also say, I'm really disappointed, and Wash U has, you know, gave a lot of money surrounding the Cortex over on why the Grove now exists. And I have always challenged them as a graduate that they need to be doing something in North St. Louis. The hospital doesn't pay their fair share of taxes. They don't even have a, any kind of medical facility north of North St. Louis, out north of Delmar at all, or north of Page. And so that's kind of shameful to me as a graduate of something I'm very proud of, that they do not participate in, across the board, all across the city. If you want people to celebrate the city and its cultural diversity and the things like that, when much is given to you, much is expected. And so these people who are entities that are getting all of this benefit are not spreading it out the way they should. I will remember that when the president first came, when she was not a committee woman, but an alderperson, she talked about some benefit that went with development. And I was supportive of it, but a lot of the people didn't want that. And I thought that that was a good answer, that when you're doing development, you should also have to do development in places that are not, or you should help or put some money that are not getting benefits. And that's not to say that they shouldn't get the same benefits, but I don't see that I'm getting the benefit of development that your area is, and we're handing over a powerful piece of legislation that I believe should be in the hands of the government. So I do appreciate what you're saying, and I hope that they don't have to use it. But I think hopefully, maybe one of these days, we'll get somebody who doesn't believe that that kind of power should be in the hand of private or not-for-profits. And that's what we would have, a healthy conversation like we're having now, about if that was needed, and not just leave it in the hands of people who I don't feel like have been fair to North St. Louis at all. And I've said this to people who, at the law school, and I helped them at the hospital when they had to have a crosswalk across one of the streets. I was the chair of streets, and I worked with them to get that. And it's not a crosswalk, but it's a skywalk. And the one that they're actually working on now, from the parking lot, also helped them with that. But I've also just been very disappointed in them not being more holistic about the city and taking that responsibility that they often preach about, about doing development and doing something north of, and I don't want to say Delmar, I want to say north of Page, that they should be participating in that. But thank you very much for your conversation, and I will be voting no. As I said, I voted no from the beginning, because I don't think that that is a good way to give the power of the government to private entities like that. Thank you so much.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Alderman from the ninth, you are recognized to close.
Thank you. And Alderwoman, while we were talking, I just wanted to clarify that there was one instance in which it was used to clear a title for what is now IKEA. I also want to just talk about the benefit that this brings to the whole city, not only in the terms of jobs, which employs people. They do a really good job of trying to create a diverse workforce, too, and I really appreciate them for that. They have goals they have to meet, but they far exceed those goals, and they do that on purpose. And I will also say that there is, again, a tracker, record of success, and that the institutions that gave money to start Cortex don't really receive a financial benefit from it. It is more about how this benefits the city. I also know that there have been, and this is beside the point, but I just, it was brought up, Washington University did recently, a couple of years ago, expand their employer-assisted housing program. It's now called, I think, Live Near Your Work, but they expanded that to all of North St. Louis. St. Louis and some of North County as well. And I think that's an excellent tool. It's actually how I purchased my own home and why I'm able to live, you know, where I live. So it's, it's one of those things where I see the benefit that this brings to the city, and I appreciate the healthy discussion that we were able to have about this. Again, I just ask for everyone's favorable consideration and appreciate everyone's willingness to reconsider this today.
It's been moved by the alderman from the ninth, seconded by the alderperson from the second, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill sixty-eight. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Cohen. Alderman Orion. Alderman Devotee. Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanjay. Alderwoman Cox-Antwee.
Aye.
Alderman Browning.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
O.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Ten aye votes and five no votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the alderman from the ninth to third read and finally pass Board Bill sixty-eight. Report that finally passed and signed by the president.
Board Bill fifty-three, as amended on the floor. Board Bill sixty-three, eighty, sixty-seven, sixty-two, as amended on the floor. Seventy-eight, committee sub, eighty-two, as amended on the floor, and Board Bill sixty-eight.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix her signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. First reading resolutions in reference to committee.
Resolution one thirty-six sponsored by Alderman Aldridge. Co-sponsors include Alderwoman Sanjay and Alderman Cohen, ensuring ethical investment of city retirement funds.
Madam Clerk, please make sure I'm a co-sponsor as well.
So noted.
Alderman for the fourteenth, you are recognized on the first reading of Resolution one thirty-six.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I will save the clerk from reading the resolution at the moment. I just want to thank everybody in the gallery who has been part of months and months of organizing to make sure that we do ethical investment in the city of St. Louis. We look forward to continuing to have conversations with alders about this topic and why it's important. We have already taken major stands here at the Board of Aldermen, if it was last year, with the ceasefire resolution, and always standing up for the rights of individuals throughout the world. And with that, Madam President, I would ask that we send this resolution to the Budget and Public Employees Committee.
Sir, a sec. It's been moved by the alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by the alderwoman from the seventh, that we send Resolution one thirty-six to the Budget Committee. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Resolution one thirty-seven sponsored by Alderman Oldenburg, requesting legislators and governor of Missouri to establish a system for appointment and removal of the sheriff by the judges of the twenty-second judicial circuit.
Alderman from the second, you're recognized on the first reading Resolution one thirty-seven.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to refer Resolution one thirty-seven to the Public Safety.
It's been moved by the alderman from the second, seconded by the alderman from the fourth, that we send Resolution one thirty-seven to the Public Safety Committee. Is there any discussion? Alderman from the fifth. Madam Clerk, if you could please add the alderman from the fifth as a co-sponsor of the resolu-
So noted.
It's been moved by the alderman from the second, seconded by the alderman from the fourth, that we send Resolution thirty-seven to the Public Safety Committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
Second reading resolutions, committee reports and adoptions.
Report from the Health and Human Development Committee, the mayoral appointee to the Senior Citizen Service Fund Board, William Seedorf, and the mayoral appointment to the Developmental Disabilities Resource Commission, Katrina Adams.
Alderwoman from the thirteenth, you are recognized on Mayor Spencer's appointment to the Senior Citizen Service Fund-
Thank you, Madam President and the board. I'd like to report that it was voted out to accept William Seedorf to the Senior Citizen Service Fund Board, and Katrina Adams to the Development Disability Resource Commission.
Alderwoman, we need to do them separately, so we're going to take up the-
Oh, separately, okay.
Senior Citizen Service Fund Board first.
So I-
You need to make a motion.
I asked to make a motion for the mayor's appointee to the Senior Citizen Service Fund Board of William Seedorf.
Second. Been moved by the alderwoman from the thirteenth, seconded by the alderwoman from the seventh, that we approve Mayor Spencer's appointment to the Senior Citizen Service Fund Board. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
And I, and Madam President and board, I'd like to submit the mayor's appointee to the Development Disability Resource Commission, Katrina Adams. I ask for your unanimous consent.
It's been moved by the alderwoman from the thirteenth, seconded by the alderwoman from the seventh, that we approve Mayor Spencer's appointment to the Developmental Disabilities Resource Commission. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
That's the extent of second reading resolutions, committee reports and adoptions.
Courtesy resolutions.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item twenty-four, miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item twenty-five, announcements.
Tuesday, November fourth, twenty twenty-five, HUDs will have a committee hearing in the Kennedy Room at eleven a.m. Wednesday, November fifth, twenty twenty-five, Budget and Public Employees will have a committee hearing in the Kennedy Room at ten a.m. Thursday, November sixth, personnel will have a meeting via webinar at nine thirty a.m. Friday, November seventh, twenty twenty-five, full board meeting in the chambers at ten a.m. That's the extent of the announcements.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the seventh.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I just wanted to announce that tomorrow, there is St. Louis Winter Outreach Volunteer Training, where they will be covering de-escalation, harm reduction, sheltering best practices, updates on shuttle and transportation, knowing how close we are getting to winter and freezing cold temperatures. If you are interested in this training, there will also be a light breakfast provided. It will be from nine a.m. to eleven, to noon, and it will be at thirteen fifteen Ann Avenue, the Americor St. Louis Building. So again, if you are interested at all in getting trained and ready to eat, that we know is definitely in our city, that training will be at the Americor Building at thirteen fifteen Ann from nine a.m. to noon. I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Alderman from the fourteen, Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make an announcement. Annie Malone will have their trunk or treat tonight from four to six at fifty-three fifty-five Page Avenue, and the North Patrol will have their boo with a badge at forty-fourteen Union Boulevard from four to six. And Annie Malone kicks off their Annie Malone Parade registration. It starts tomorrow. So you can go to the Annie Malone website to sign up for sponsorship and to register to be in the parade. Thank you.
Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I would like to announce that we will hear Board Bill ninety-three, ninety-four, and ninety-five in HUDs next week, if clerks-
In budget.
In budget. In budget next week, if the clerks can make note of that. Thank you, Madam President. And also, I would like to, and budget committee is at ten a.m., announce tomorrow, November the first, the Firehouse at fourteen twenty-one. North Jefferson Headquarters will be holding also a trunk or treat, just because Halloween will be over. We're going to make sure that the kids continue to have fun. There's many sponsors for that event that's happening. Again, that will be at fourteen twenty-one North Jefferson from two to five p.m. And I just want to wish all the kids a happy, safe Halloween. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderwoman from the tenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. First, I'd like to thank my colleagues for their support this morning. I'm late on a call about a constituent that is still dealing with some, like many, needs one hundred and sixty-eight days after the tornado. So you all support today. And suspending the rules to move those bills means more than you could know, more than us on this floor, and more than we can now try to work and play our very important role as we meet this season. And then I wanted to thank everyone that reached out to me yesterday. I wasn't on a family emergency, I was at a family celebration. So I want to ask my colleagues for a moment of silence. Yesterday, I was at Marion Willie Baker's funeral. Marion Willie Baker, officially known as My Baker, was a pillar in the community on the forty-two-hundred block of Prairie. And you might not know her name, but ninety-two years of love was shown and shared yesterday as she brought the city out. And so I want to thank, if you don't know, her name, My Baker, who is not only a friend but a family to city government and departments, and our St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department that showed up and showed out yesterday for her. Um, thank you all. And I would like to ask that we have a moment of silence in recognition of the life and legacy of Marion My Baker.
We could please stand and bow our heads for a moment of silence.
Thank you.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. All members were present this morning.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Before I make the motion to adjourn, I forgot something that I wanted to say. I got caught up in the emotions of what I did say. But I also want to make sure that we reflect, those of us that are in costume, and some of us are not in costume, we are also reflecting pink. The reason we wear in pink today is because of breast cancer awareness. We close out this month, we want to make sure that our advocacy and ability to uplift this on our platform is, doesn't stop today, especially since we celebrate with our very own aura higgs with eight years of surviving, being a cancer survivor. So again, I would be remiss if I didn't do that. And with that, I would like to make the motion that we adjourn until Friday, November seventh, twenty twenty-five, in the Board of Aldermen's at ten a.m.
It's been moved by the alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the alderwoman from the seventh, that we adjourn until Friday, November seventh, twenty twenty-five, in the Board of Aldermen's at ten a.m. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.